Okay, welcome everybody. I'll call to order the Committee of the whole meeting, June twenty fourth, two thousand twenty four. First, I'd like to acknowledge that the Northern Rockies Administration Center is located in the heart of the traditional territory of the Dene, Cree and Dunaisaw people of Fort Nelson and Ofor River First Nations. Further recognize the rights provided by our treaty. Finally, we also celebrate the contributions and enduring presence of Maiti people in our region. Please be advised that tonight's meeting is available for the public to attend virtually, is being streamed and recorded. Do we have any counsel or CIO additions for the meeting? None? Hearing none, moving on. Are there any attendees either in the gallery or online that wish to comment on the agenda? Hearing none, I'll ask for an adoption of agenda. Moved by Counselor Sol, seconded Counselor Groom, favor, all post, that carries. Okay, petitions and delegations here with us tonight. We have Kerry Newkirk, Newkrik, sorry, Director of Indigenous and Stakeholder Relations for Northwest Tel. Thanks for taking the time to meet with us.
Good evening. And thank you for the invitation and I appreciate the difficulties of the recent wildfires and such, so it's nice to see everybody back home safe and sound. Before I go into the presentation, I'm not sure what everybody else's evenings plans are. I don't know that everybody expected a game seven tonight, so there is an option where I can either run through the deck slide by slide, or I can hit some highlights of the presentation that I provided to you. It's your call. I'm actually don't watch a lot of hockey, so I'm good either way.
What are council's wishes? Okay, so I'm hearing highlights, so give us the good stuff.
So first, I want to acknowledge that Northwest Tel, I'm calling you from the traditional territories of Tonkua Chen and Kwanlim Dun First Nations here in Whitehorse Yukon. Northwest Tel serves a great variety of nations and communities across the north, including northern B.C. The council had asked me to touch on a couple, or sorry, just a bit of the backstory. We've been working with Northern Rockies Regional Council for a number of years trying to move fiber into the homes particularly in north and Fort Nelson along the Alaska Highway. We've ran into a number of challenges with getting that over the board with funding, as you can appreciate a private business serving a highly dispersed population at times, it becomes extremely difficult to make any kind of business case to do this work, so we rely fairly heavily on subsidy. So over the last three or four years, we've been working with the B.C. government to try to advance and move forward fiber along the Alaska Highway, including Fort Nelson and Fort Nelson proper, so both the rural area around Fort Nelson as well as Fort Nelson proper. Since that time, the Northern Rockies had their voice heard at the CRTC hearing here in Whitehorse in April. And we heard loud and clear that fiber is necessary rejuvenating the infrastructure in and around Fort Nelson along the highway is extremely important. And we heard that loud and clear, we knew that that was important, and we've been on side with that for some time with you and trying to get that project forward. Since that time, the Connecting Communities B.C. has advanced their program and it looks like they opened a door enough that we were able to get in a proposal. So when we first reached out to you to request a letter of support, although B.C. government had said, no, no, we don't need letters of support, they kind of came back at the last minute and said, yes, we'd actually like some letters of support. So that was why we initially came back to you and said, is that possible? Your forest fires were happening, that got delayed. So we think we're at the latter stages of the approval process with CCBC. We think that things look good for this funding project to go forward. I can formally ask for a letter of support, that would be great if you so deem it. If not, we think because we put on the record the quotes from Northern Rockies that were heard at the hearing. We think your voices have been heard, but we'll put that to you as a request, but I wouldn't say it's necessarily critical depending on your schedule. That proposal would bring fiber to the same levels that you would see just north of you in Watson Lake. So for Fort Nelson and the surrounding communities, there's one slight error in the slide deck, and I apologize, the numbers got jumbled. I didn't realize they weren't automatically stacking there. But the slide that talks about what services would be coming, it's five hundred megabits per second symmetrical, so five hundred up, five hundred down. So, and we have plans to continue to increase that speed as we move forward. Given that I'm just hitting the highlights, that's kind of the update and where we got to with the B.C. government. That's the speeds that are coming. If you want to check how much would it cost, I would log into our website and look at the pricing, for example, in Watson Lake. That'll give you a good reference. It's tariffed. We don't know what it is final till it's final, but it's going to be very, very close to something like that that you would see there. Last, sometimes there are questions about coverage. It's a tough one. You can't say everybody everywhere all the time, although we'd like to get rid of all copper, but basically if you're receiving Northwest Tel service now and you're on copper and you're in those regions, you will receive fiber at no cost. So it'll be an automatic transition over. You'd have to give us permission to enter the property to do that upgrade, but you would have fiber at no installation fee. From there, you just move forward and have options for packages, either cap that started around forty and change per month and unlimited, I think it's around one forty, one fifty a month, and then it goes up from there depending on what your uses and needs are. Before I talk about Project Unity, which was a recent announcement regarding the ownership of Northwest Tel, maybe I'll pause there and ask if there's any questions about what this fiber project looks like and what it means to the communities you serve.
I think we have a question.
Yeah, sorry, just so that I understand completely, what you're saying is that if this goes ahead, there will be a fee increase for all users? No?
No, so the, right now, what you have are basically capped services for the most part, which means in some ways, it's the limit of the technology. It's also, it controls the amount of information going through the pipe, so if we keep a lid on it and they're by charging more for these, exceeding the data usage, it keeps us able to be functioning with no congestion and the services that we promised are the services we can deliver. So those basic fees, though, are more or less translatable to what it would be on the fiber plant. But what fiber offers you is a number of other options as well. So what we found is for many customers who have households with multiple users, like kids, the work, business, other things, they're running into those data caps all the time and paying overage fees. For those users, they're actually saving money by going to the unlimited and paying a one set fee per month and not having to worry about data usage. Generally, we don't see any increases for most people as they translate over.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Of course.
Hey, any other questions for Mr. Newkrik?
I'll just briefly go into the Project Unity. I was asked to talk a little bit about that. We had an announcement recently where Northwest Tel, we are currently a wholly owned subsidiary of Bell Canada. Bell Canada has effectively agreed to enter an agreement with a consortium of indigenous communities through their dev corps to transfer that shareholder ownership over to that consortium. For Northwest Tel proper, for its employees, for our projects, for our commitments, for all the things that we do and are as a body of employees and as a company, it stays the same. We're not being bought by a company that is going to come through and slice and dice and change up and try to save some money here and there. We are being bought as a whole entity. There are commitments to keep the management team intact. So we will move forward as a new entity, but we will be indigenous owned at that point. The agreement is essentially agreement in principle. We are waiting for some final pieces to be put into place, and we anticipate that that will happen over the next two quarters. So probably by early next year, we'll have a final decision on this. We're very optimistic and we're very excited about it. It would not change anything for the CCBC application that we put in that would affect the Northern Rockies region.
And that's, do you have any highlights? Great. Well, thank you very much for the presentation. Are there any other questions from council, the presentation? Okay, well, hearing none. Mr. Newkrik, thank you very much for your time. Oh, I'm seeing Mayor Fraser online has a question. Go ahead.
Thanks. So is this project looking at bringing a new backbone all the way from Edmonton to the Yukon? Is that what this project is about?
No, this is what we would call the last mile. So it's almost exactly like when you turn off the highway and you enter all the little roads, all the little roads are getting fiber. The main highway still has, it uses the existing backbone. So on the very last slide of the deck, there's some, it shows what our fiber backbone is, those big lines that soon to be completed circle in the north with a couple of outlets to the south. That's what we're trying to take off of that and go into communities, and so that includes the Toad Rivers, the Manchos along the Alaska Highway there.
Right, and so the fiber you have there now is good enough, or the backbone you have is good enough to do that already?
Yeah, I mean, it's not a big, fiber is amazing because it's fiber off the cable and the information travels at the speed of light, so it's really only limited by the boxes you put on either end of it to send and receive information. So consequently, the fiber that we have there is built robust enough to be able to do this, and then we would just basically take that off ramp into the Fort Nelsons and the Toads and the Manchos and angle from there.
And bring it directly to each house.
Bring it directly to each house, yeah. I would say that, I mean, if somebody has a three kilometer long driveway, we're going to have to have a conversation about what that cost looks like, but for the vast majority of people, it would be the fiber will be lashed to the existing copper plant that you see those lower wires on between telephone poles, that's telecommunications copper. The fiber will be lashed to those, and then it would be spooled and delivered to each of the houses.
Right. So there have been people who have been, you know, upset with the with the quality of service, I guess, over the years, and, I mean, frankly, they've gone to Elon Musk's system, right? And so they've, for one reason or another, have left Northwest Tel. So did I hear you say that you have to be a Northwest Tel user before this will come to your property, or is it just good enough that the that the copper is already into the property and then you'll service it as well?
Yeah, what I was saying is, we sometimes get a question, is my house included? And the quick answer is, if you are, or in this case is proposed, have been served by copper before, you can have fiber to the home connected again, and if you have a short run that's underground, that's okay. Again, there are exceptions to that. We believe that, yes, we know we've lost lots of customers to Starlink. It's a viable competitor. If you do the math, though, from a speed and growth perspective, we win hands down with fiber. So we see where we have fiber. We don't have a problem with Starlink. Those speeds that I mentioned are not what is on offer from Starlink from a reliability and a speed perspective. Additionally, we see a dramatic reduction in trouble tickets and calls to fiber communities, which means it's reliable and people aren't having problems with it. So it's good for us to not have to roll as many trucks. It's good for the environment and it's good for the customer.
Right, and if you're offering five hundred up, five hundred down, that's significantly better, so.
Okay, that, those are the questions I had. Thank you.
Awesome. If folks have any other questions following, I'm available for anything. Again, that letter to, a supporting letter for the project, it's not been approved yet. It's always welcome and appreciated. But I also appreciate you guys after your evacuations are probably still buried on a number of items and playing catch up, so I appreciate, certainly appreciate your time tonight.
Mr. Newkrik, I think we have a question from our online viewership here. Can we take that question? Ms. Vanderstein? Can't hear you quite yet, Ms. Vanderstein.
Are we there now?
I can hear you.
Okay, good. Thanks very much for allowing me to ask a question. I just wanted to clarify, I'm with the Fort Nelson Chamber of Commerce. Does that include, you're talking about two homes, but does that include the businesses along the Alaska Highway?
So the project funding that B.C. runs is augmented and supported with the federal funding that comes through from ISAT, and that funding is directed at residential. What we do see, though, is as the fiber plant improves, particularly in communities like Fort Nelson, it becomes easier to do fiber for businesses, but that is not the leading charge of this service. There are certain businesses, and I'd have to go one by one and figure out which ones we'd want to talk about along the Alaska Highway who have the option to go to fiber even now through our enterprise services, but it's not part of this project and not part of this project proposal specifically.
We might have lost Ms. Vanderstein. I hope that answered the question. I'm sure it did. Okay, Mr. Newkrik, thank you very much for the presentation and your time. If there's no other questions, we'll conclude.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Take care.
Bye bye.
Okay, moving on to six point one. Well, we don't make decisions in the Committee of the Holes, so.
It's on the, it's on the regular.
Yeah, we'll return it on the regular. You betcha. Okay, moving on, six point one, Committee of the Hall Report Number zero eight slash twenty four, Community Facility Fee Waiver Policy. Ms. Aspen, take it away.
All right, thank you. So we're bringing this back after a few meetings where we've had to push it off for other pressing matters. The report gives you a bit of a background on where we're at with both the recreation rental exemption policy and the discussions we've had to this point on the discretionary grant and aid program and how it also handles facility fee waivers. In looking back and doing some research on this, prior council in two thousand twenty two had looked at this as a piece of the what was grants to groups at the time. So we're bringing it back now as a interim policy that essentially would be a part of the larger government transfers policy eventually. Hopefully, we can answer a few questions now to build this policy into something that'll get us through till we have those bigger conversations. So we kind of posed them in question format, and we can walk through them kind of individually and see what council is thinking on each question, and if we run out of time, we can circle back to it at a later date. So would you like to just go through them one at a time?
Sure, yeah, that would be, that would be good.
So essentially, we are looking at an overall objective to provide affordable access to public spaces for our local groups in a way that's fiscally responsible, and so we can waive facility fees as opposed to giving out dollar amount grants. And the benefit to the community would then align with the strategic priorities that council sets. Are we missing anything in the objectives and priorities?
Counselor, notice anything missing here?
And the prior draft that was brought to you has a few additional bullet point options there for objectives and priorities. Sorry, the you should have the printed draft there. I had noticed it wasn't attached on the agenda, so the electronic option has it attached there now, but so you guys with printed copies have draft in front of you there. Happy with those. We can move along to next.
I'll just add, like, the intent tonight is not to finalize, obviously, the policy. It's just to start to get some ideas from council so we can get the framework of that policy language and the intent to incorporate it as part of the government charter piece, so it's not that you're making decisions tonight. That's going to the intent is the discussion will help influence some of the framework.
So looking at our limits and exemptions that we may want to place within the policy, the current grant and aid has the limit of one grant a year, has a dollar amount specified, along with a few other criteria that are also included here. With the note that some of the concerns brought forward from community members was the limit to once a year is a bit limiting, and the dollar amount has been limiting in certain circumstances. So we may wish to either set a limit or a limit on how many can be accessed a year.
Do we, do we know when the last time the dollar limit was increased? Even with inflation? How long has it been at the thousand dollars?
Good question.
A while, I think, as long as my.
Yeah, we can find the data when it was, I think it's since inception of the current.
The current policy has always.
It's been, it's been quite some time.
Mayor Fraser, did you have comments there?
Yeah, I've got, I've got a couple of comments here on this particular. If, if our intent, if, you know, is to try to make this a little bit more affordable for some of the nonprofits and others that might want to use these facilities, then I really don't have a problem with them using it more than once in a year because it starts to become it's difficult to put these to put these, to put these, these programs on. You know, I don't have any problem supporting more than one, multiple even in a particular year, because I know the ability to put these on is limited by, by the different agencies that are out there. I don't think that if we, you know, if, I mean, unlimited, I guess, is maybe too far, but I'm comfortable with, with, with doing more than one and not putting a dollar value on it. If the intent is to try to make it so that these nonprofits can, can use the space as long as there's not a, and I think that gets into that a little further, as long as there's not somebody competing that's paying for that space. And as long as it's not multiple days, you know, I think if it's, if it's for a one day event, and, and they have a couple of those throughout the year, you know, I'm, I'm pretty comfortable with that. I mean, I do realize that it's tough to pull it back if all of a sudden you had somebody saying, hey, we want one every month. But the capacity to put on that many events is, is pretty is pretty limited, I think. So I don't have any trouble here with more than one event.
I agree with Mayor Fraser's comments. It is getting harder for nonprofits to put on these events. There's less and less people to volunteer. Costs are increasing, so, yeah, I like the idea of being at least open to, you know, an organization putting on multiple events, even if it's per case basis, where we look at the second event and make a decision from there. Are there any other comments so far? Counselor Groom?
Yeah, I have a little concern with the amount of staff time. I think that there needs to be a maximum there. Some events can consume a lot of staff time, and I think that, that we would need to be really careful with that. So right now, there's current limits put in place as to how much staff time. I think it's ten hours. I wouldn't see, want to see it go up more than that. But I think we need to be careful, too, if we, and I'm not saying I'm against multiple users, but if we are going to increase that, then we have to make sure that we have the staffing, the additional staffing costs covered, would be my one concern. And also, I wouldn't, and I think I remember this from when we began talking about this previous councils, there was a real concern that we didn't want to offer up community spaces and taking away from businesses that offer rentals for for their establishment, because there was some concerns from the business community that there would be less rentals then for them. So just caution there.
Yeah, I thought, I thought we were going through these one at a time, so if we want to jump to that, I'm, I'm also agreeable to, you know, staff determining how much time they can put towards, and I don't know, it's up to ten hours now. I don't know if we're putting, you know, is it, is that ten hours per person, or is that ten hours total staff time, which means if you've got five people, they can do it for two hours each, that's ten hours. I mean, I recognize that that's, that can potentially be a significant burden if we're talking about staff time, but.
Currently, the only people accessing the rental exemption policy are those few listed, and then funerals being the only one that's really open to the general public at this time with those parameters, the ten hour staff time. With, with that caveat that they're not able to bump other scheduled or paid users.
Yeah, so how much time does it take us to do a standard funeral with staff, staff time? With the chairs and, and, and or tables and or both? You know, do we have sort of an estimate of how much staff time we're spending for something like that, for a one day event on setup?
It wouldn't go above and beyond what's listed here for the ten hour staff time.
Yeah, but is it less than that? Is it mostly less than that?
It, it's really varied as the services vary in size quite significantly. So it can be as little as a few hours to set up a hundred chairs and some tables to the full ten hours when they do a turnaround and additional additional setup and facilitation, yeah.
I think my experience with memorial services, I would venture to say between four and five hours hard staff time to set up and take down, and then, of course, the services can be forty five minutes or three hours, really, you know, and then depending on the activities afterwards, so. Yeah, I'd say that's probably up in the air, but it's, that's a pretty simple setup as far as logistics go, tables, chairs, and it's almost the same every time, so I wouldn't see that as too much of a burden on the staff for that type of event.
Yeah, we might have to put a little bit more thought around the, the staff time issue and, and, yeah, because if, if we start offering this and people start to take advantage of it, then I, I agree with Counselor Groom, then, you know, maybe we limit the amount of staff time per group, per year, and anything after that they have to pay for or something, and, yeah, it's something we should probably be talking to staff about.
Is there distinction? Sorry, Mayor Fraser, go ahead.
Sorry, I was just going to say, is it, you know, is it ten hours per event? Is it ten hours annually? Is it? What, what exactly? I know we only have four there. I think it's four sort of legacy legacy events, I guess, that, that we're speaking about, but if there's, you know, are we talking about ten hours per event or ten hours per per group, per year? I'm just not sure where you might go with that.
I think we should also keep in mind the fact that, you know, if an organization wants to do an event on holiday, it may be increased costs to us. Even, even if we are still open on that day, it might be, that could change things, so maybe we should consider that as well. Okay, let's move on to the next section.
Okay, so sorry, I didn't mean to not go in order, Mayor, so what are you wanting to, like, what are the limits and exemptions? So we talked about one fee waiver per year, and then do you want to go through bullet by bullet, like always exempt for specific or specified activities, groups, no commercial entities?
Yeah, I wasn't really sure how we were going to approach all that, but I, yeah, if these are things that they're asking us to comment on, then I think we should talk, comment about each one of them. Either I don't have a problem, or, or, yeah, this is what I'd like to see, so. Like always exempt.
I need some clarification on always exempt for specified activities and groups. Is that you're talking about Remembrance Day, food bank, funerals, the Christmas dinner, dry grad, and graduation? Okay, so I guess that would be our next conversation piece?
Yeah.
And if there's any that you wish to include in that, if you wanted to go that direction?
I'm good with continuing as it is. Not that Grad has been using the rec center of late. They're doing most things at the high school, but.
Commercial entities, do we want to continue to limit that in our policies?
I, I agree with that. No commercial entities.
Keeping it local or regional?
For me, this is about local, not even regional. I think it's, you know, it's the local groups that are, that we're trying to encourage to do the things that they're doing. Maybe somebody can change my mind with a, with an idea for, you know, a regional group that, that we might want to, or have done in the past. But for me, it, I think this policy should apply to local groups.
To Mayor, just to clarify, when you say regional mayor, you mean outside the region municipality?
I don't know. Whatever, whatever. What, what does regional mean to you guys?
Well, I was, I asked, I got to clarify, we think that local would be region, region municipality within the region municipality. Right? That, that's, that's what we would, I would take it as anyway, but I guess it's good to clarify with council because, I mean.
Regional may include the Toad.
Within, within, within the municipality. Just to, just for council, just to confirm what you feel that is.
Yeah, I mean, for me, I, I, it would be the entire region. Any nonprofits, whether it's here, Toad River, Muncha Lake. Yeah, any of those would be eligible, but I'd like to hear from anyone else. Go ahead, Councilor.
Yeah, for sure. For me, it's regional, like, but Northern Rockies Regional Municipality. So whether it's Toad, Muncho, Lake, any of those areas. Definitely not like past that, I guess. So our boundaries, if there's a not-for-profit that's operating in our boundaries and wants to use the hall or whatever facility we're talking about, I think it should, yeah, have that regional approach.
Yeah, to me, that's local. If it's, if it's in, if it's, if it's within the, the boundaries of the, of our, of the municipality, Northern Rockies, then, then that's, that's local. To me, regional is taking it much, much further all the way out to some of the other regions. As I say, somebody from Park St. John wanted to come out and put some kind of a deal on. To me, that would be outside the scope of this, of this event. That's my, that's what my thoughts were. But let's just say the Rocky Mountain, uh, it used to be the Rocky Mountain Out Foundation. I think now they call themselves the Northeast. Northeast. Yeah, the wildlife.
Wildfire, wildlife.
Yeah, wildlife. Yeah, like to me, that's, that's a lo- although that's a regional sort of thing that's still being put on by locals to me. So I don't know if they pay or they don't pay.
I just, I think that it's actually helpful to just use the word local and not regional because it actually starts to teach our own people that, that their neighbors live here in our whole municipality. Local means something different to us than it means to a lot of us.
And that, and that's, that could be a good definition, right? So local is defined as within this area, which would be within the municipality.
And we touched on the maximum value. Are we all on the same page with the open amount or are we wanting to set a?
Go ahead, Councilor.
Yeah, I'm just, and so this just entered my head. So it, you know, feel free to shoot it down, but maybe this, this is, this is a space where we could create a maximum value so that if an organization was within this maximum value, but they could use the hall three or four times a year because we're talking now value. We're not talking about number of times, right? Another group might require more services or whatever. So that value of each rental could be higher. So then they wouldn't be able to access the hall as many times. Just an idea. If we did set that maximum value, it might be a workable solution to the amount of times an organization could access.
So a maximum annual amount?
I don't know. It might not be a good idea, but something to think about.
I, I think there's, I think there's merit to that thought with respect to, you know, the, the total amount. But for me, the val- it, how do we determine what the value is? Is, are we talking about what our actual costs are? Because I'm sure our costs are less than what, what we charge it out at. I, I'd kind of like to know the difference between those because it's, it's one thing to say, oh, well, you know, we charge a thousand dollars for, for a place for an evening or, or whatever it is, when our costs are actually only say 450. Right? What are our actual costs? What are we actually giving, you know, giving away? If we know what that number is, then then you can start to really figure out what you're trying to do here. You're trying to make money off of these people. And when you, or sorry, these organizations, when you, when we set our rates, are, are our rates already low enough that they're, you know, they're not, they're not covering the costs of, you know, staff, that, that, that sort of thing? And so I'd, I'd like to know a little bit more information about what our actual costs are, not what we charge the facility out at. And it would help me to make a better decision with respect to the maximums. Because then it, it starts to speak to the total amount of staff time to, to Counselor Grooming's point. Is that something that's, that's doable? Can we do a little bit more research with respect to what our actual costs are?
Yes. Yeah, we can bring that back with a few suggestions with the policy for review.
And so I think those last two bullets of that, of that limits, I, I, to me, they, they kind of fit together with, with the response to the last question. That's my thought anyway.
So if we're good for that, moving on to approvals and submissions. They're set up right now in the grant need process as a quarterly intake process. This could still be managed in a quarterly intake for ease of administration. But I know the rental exemption policy is just taken in as, as it's booked and assessed all through the rec bookings process. So if we did open up the rental exemption policy to additional groups, it could still be managed within recreation with the set parameters. As long as that, those are pretty clearly defined. And then it could be brought to council should requests come in for over that set amount that was specified of amount of rentals or dollar amount usually. What's council's feeling on that?
So I do have.
Oh, go ahead.
Thank you. So I do have a thought on, on this, and that is if we get this policy right, staff should be able to handle it. Without, you know, and I, and, you know, if, if, if staff feels they need quarterly intakes. You know, I, then, then that would be a, a staff agreement. But if we get it right, it seems to me people should be able to apply just about any time staff. It's not like it needs to come to council if it's, if it's, if it fits the policy, staff can make the decision, operationalize it. That's my thought unless staff feels there's, there's, you know, some problem with that. But, but if we get the policy right, staff should be able to look after it.
I agree 100%. I would like to see though that, you know, if there's a dispute or whatever, or something that doesn't meet the policy that the group has an avenue to address council. So I would like to see that. And I will also, I would like to see a continuous intake, just working with not-for-profits. Especially over the last couple of years, it's been very challenging. Lots of staff turnover, a lack of volunteerism. So to get these applications in, even to know about them when you're having so many staff changeovers is, has been problematic for the organizations that I have been involved in. So I would like to see a continuous intake. If it's not available, it's not available, right? But, yeah.
I think we touched on the legacy activities and keeping them in there. There's currently a dollar amount set on the RCMP bike rodeo. Not sure if, then that maximum amount would then be absorbed into the rest of the policy. So there wouldn't be a limit set on that dollar.
I'm just, would like to talk about the bike rodeo. Like, I'm not sure why that was added to the list. I can't remember the last time there has been a bike rodeo, but perhaps I have just missed it.
It had been, I think, I, I don't know how many years ago now. But it had been a previous council, so quite a few years ago that it was even brought to council, but it was a resolution of council that had been added.
So from my perspective, I think they could just apply through this policy like every other group. I don't, except for, I guess there wouldn't be considered a not-for-profit organization and, and that's one of the parameters for applying. So maybe that's why they were added to this legacy thing. I don't know.
I guess, I guess the reality, well, for profit either, I guess, if it's a business looking to make money. Similarly, I guess anything that's here, I mean, does, do the legacy, legacy organizations need to be there? If there's a process that's in place that says if you're nonprofit and misses the parameters, then as the mayor said, operationally, it's just, you know, the policy is straightforward and laid out. It's, it's, it's operational circumstance. And if you meet those parameters, then you're in. I think the only thing that's for us to be, to probably have timelines around in terms of this. We don't want someone calling you the day of or the day before, wondering if they can get the event to have, you know, from a staffing perspective. But that's, that's just an operation component we can add to, to make sure that it's, it's, it's feasible and realistic.
Yeah, it, it seems to me the legacy, the legacies go away if this, if we get this policy right. I mean, they just, everybody applies and you know, you don't really need to even carry those things along. If, if they've, they meet the policy, they, they're in.
Actually, Mayor, I think Counselor Andrews did have his hand up. It's down. I'm not sure.
Counselor Andrews, do you have a question?
We kind of answered my question as we went along. Thank you.
I have a question about activities, let's say during the events. Let's say you have a, a nonprofit, but they're fundraising for their cause, selling tickets, selling booze, 50/50 raffles. How does that enter in when they're looking to not make a profit, but fundraise for their organizations? Expenses for that event. Do they still qualify? Are there any special considerations for those types of events?
It was considered in the draft that was brought forward, I believe. And I have seen in my research some examples that specify either that fundraising activities be exempt or that fundraising activities be included. It depends on the community. You can say one way or the other if council wishes us like a limitation or a parameter.
Yeah, I mean, let's say, you know, we have one organization that's putting on a free event. Everybody can go. There's no restrictions. You've got another organization, tickets are $75. Maybe that includes a meal or something. But it's, it's definitely a consideration as to who can enjoy that, that, that event and who's getting the space for that time and what, what they're doing with it.
Brings up a really important point, though. Then maybe that needs to be considered in the usage amount. If it's being used for fundraising activities for an organization. I mean, you could do whatever activity every month, right? If, if the usage of the hall is free. But I, I see it different if there's a not-for-profit that's putting on an event for the community that's free for everybody to attend. And whether it's educational or enjoyment or whatever it happens to is the preschool health roundup or the seniors, whatever, right? Like, that's different than, say, you know, a dinner and a dance that is raising funds. Yeah. That's a really good point. I think I need to think about that.
Yeah, I mean, there could be a nonprofit that walks away with $15,000 in alcohol sales perhaps. And at that point, they've, they've made a pretty penny from, from something that was provided for free. Counselor Enix, you had a question?
And just to comment, the Aurora Dance, we, our society, I guess, does raffles. And where we hope to bring enough in just to cover the cost of everything, you know, the band and that. So some of the groups are doing that, but yeah, some of them are fully fundraising. And we do free things too. So I guess it depends on.
I am, I am all for a nonprofit taking advantage of this program and raising funds for their nonprofit organization. That's their job to do. We shouldn't, we shouldn't put restrictions to their job, but it should be a consideration. Perhaps with the reporting, we should find out what their expenses were, what their revenues were. Find that they're walking away. If we find that they could have afforded the rental rates, perhaps maybe there was another nonprofit that couldn't get in because we were maxed out. You know, we should consider that. Yeah.
Boy, now you're starting to pick winners and losers, I think, a little bit. I, I think if, if, if an organization has the ability to put on a, a fundraiser that includes alcohol and, you know, is, they're all open to the public. Anybody can attend. And I, I understand your point about something being free and something being different. But to me, this is about helping the organizations put on whatever it is that they're trying to put on at a cost that's, that's, that's reasonable to help them make the money. Because remember, we, we, we save at the other end. At budget time, when they're looking for, this is when we, when they're looking for grants to community groups, if they're making these kind of funds, you know, or they're making a lot of money, they should be asking for less from us. So I, I think it's, you know, it's, there's a win at either end of this for us. So I, I, I don't see the difference between them. If it's an organization in the community trying to fundraise or trying to put on an educational thing, we're there to, we're there to not restrict them, to help them do that. That's my understanding of the way this is being put together. My thoughts.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's a good point. Absolutely.
I think, I think recognizing the fact that it's a nonprofit, right? So I mean, if you walk away with a profit, that might be intent though is the legalities around what you can do with those, you can't do with, right? So it's not like you, you're paying shareholder or putting money in the bank. In most cases, in many cases, if they're making a, making profits off an event, it's either utilized to provide a greater service or continuing the service in community or giving back to community. You know, pick on Rotary, for example. This is an organization that gives back into the community. So just, you know, just to consider that. I mean, that's the difference between your nonprofit and your for-profit organization or commercial organization. And then it becomes challenging to be able to draw the line to say who's, who can or who shouldn't. It's either you're a nonprofit or not. If you're a registered nonprofit organization, and I think you should recognize that, that they have the ability to utilize the program within the parameters, of course, right?
Yeah. Yeah. Good points.
Covers all the questions that we had for now. And then I, as we mentioned, hopefully bring that all back into the next updated draft policy for review. And we can bring back the information that Mayor Fraser was looking for.
Go ahead, Mayor Fraser.
Thank, thank you. So I did have some questions with respect to some of the timeframes that, that are on that next paragraph. Talks about 14 days notice. Are we gonna put the word except for funerals in there? Because funerals, you know, nobody plans those, right? So.
The rolling exemption.
Yeah, maybe it's just obvious, but you know, I just wanted to make sure that that was in there.
I had one question. What if there's an individual, not a nonprofit, not a company, but a person who wants to say put on a community dance to raise funds for someone's medical bills?
Counselor Roper, yeah, we had one for the Torville family and it came to council because it was outside the parameters.
Right. So is that in the parameters of our new policy?
It could be added at council's discretion. If it's a community event, a type of event could be a criteria. As, as well as the local nonprofit criteria.
I, I, I'm cautious. I I I'm cautious about that with respect to making sure that, you know, the nonprofits, you know, have a requirement with respect to how how the money spent, how, you know, the profits from whatever it is are being spent. There's a, you know, they do have a requirement to submit annually their their finances, that sort of thing to the province. There's some restrictions on them. I I think of making sure that they get the insurance, all of those types of things. I'm I'm a little bit more nervous when it comes to an individual putting on something like this to make sure that they had the capacity to do it. I I I wouldn't want to just see that individuals go by policy. That that's exemption, exception to the rule. This is, to me, this is for nonprofits. And and that would be an exception, and that would have to come to council with a report from staff saying that this individual has met all the expected criteria of the application.
Good point.
Yeah, I think it's an opportunity. I mean, to try to book in this, it's best to have the parameters that are from an operational perspective, they're are relatively for lack of a better words, easy to apply. And then anything outside of that, it's not that it wouldn't be up to council's wishes to support something. But there's so many different scenarios that could come to play. It just starts to start to muddy the waters, and it's better to be able to, you know, take each one of those examples individually, bring them forward to council with that report, outline all of all the things that support or don't, whatever it might be, the council can review it and see if it passes the sniff test, for lack of a better word, right? Otherwise, it could really, it could really open up. Great, for lack of a better word.
Not that I want to discourage, not that I want to discourage that, you know, I I I think if somebody came forward with a plan and staff would work with them, you know, outside of this policy to try to make a report for council. I'm not saying that I want to discourage that at all.
Yeah, absolutely. I think we have to discuss these different scenarios and be prepared for them. Yeah, okay. All right. Well, thank you very much for that wholesome report and very good discussions around the table. Looking forward to getting a fun report back. Okay, moving on to number eight in the agenda, public news, media questions and answers period. Is there any media that would like to ask some questions? Hearing none. We will move to an endormment and everyone to six thirty. Thank you.
See you at six thirty, everybody.